Okay, I'll call the panel select board to order at 7:02. Anything to add to the agenda?
Yes, under all business, I'd like to bring up a discussion on the town manager administrator discussion.
Can I add something?
I don't know, can you? Is that legal? You were chairman of the board for 100 years, is that legal?
Fine, fine. You're either gonna have public comment with her talking, or she can add something to talk at that point on that subject.
Yeah, right.
I just wanna go by the rules.
Okay, good enough. What do you want to add?
I was gonna ask about the town manager position because of the board's...
Yeah, we just added that.
And the other is the, what's going on with the town office and Chapman. Just a status report.
Well, we were gonna discuss that, I thought, pretty soon and find out, you know, we should put something in front of the people and ask them what they want to do. I sure am not gonna decide. I thought we were waiting for the committee there to send in their last results, and didn't we have something coming back from Chapman?
We can bring it up under all business, Ronnie.
Yeah, so we'll bring that up then and talk about it.
I'm just asking, did we adjourn?
Yep. We've added.
All right.
Okay.
Why?
I make a motion we accept the agenda with the addition.
Second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Minutes of...
Last week. I make a motion to approve.
Second it.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. I was abstinent, I abstained.
Okay. The marks, send me them marks down here, Henry. And...
Have we missed those pages?
Accounts payable was, the number was 20,323,24. And the bigger ones was health insurance, 2,900, payroll transfer, 2,500, and electricity, 6,300. And the other one, payroll, the number for that was $6,985.48. I get a motion?
I move to approve.
Second it.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, mail. Got a liquor license application for next door beer and wine.
Move to approve.
Get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I guess we all sign that anyway, I think. And we got weight permit for Michael S. Tetro.
All the normal things on there, tonnage?
Yes, maximum weight 60,000. He's done it before, and it's got the mud season thing. Of course, we don't have at this moment a highway foreman, but I think our fill-in guy could tell him if he has.
I move, I move, we approve it.
I second.
Second? All right, I'll sign it then. Okay, BCRC, they got an annual meeting at the Conic Hotel, the Trillium Ballroom, I guess if you want to sign up for that. They got the paperwork here, that's Thursday, May 19th, Bennington County Regional Commission.
We just tell Linda if we want to sign up?
That's it, just tell Linda, she'll get you signed up.
Put a sticky on there if anybody puts their name down.
Yes, if you want to sign up, there's a sticky right here, you can just sign right up. If you don't, just pass it on.
Bring it down here.
Oh. Got a letter here from Bill Scully, must be something to do with the hydro project.
It's a status report on where they are with FERC.
Yeah, it's a status report with how we're doing with FERC. There was a couple of things he wanted to clear up amongst them, and he said he would get back to us as soon as they had some hashing to do to come to an agreement. That's all that is. I mean, I could read it, but it'd take half the night.
Yeah, I'd like to say one more thing about the hydro. The Mount Anthony Board last night voted to go into an agreement to purchase the power. He's asked if this town would also do that. I told him that he should bring some sort of contract in for us so we can approve it, because he's looking for the town to do all of it, like the wastewater and the things we were gonna do with the solar.
Right.
He wants to offer the same thing here, so he'll be coming with the, which is separate than that, because that's the lease for the use of the property.
Right.
This is for the purchase of power, so he'll be bringing that soon.
And the good thing about the hydro, which way out, outreach is solar, is it operates at 82% when you can have maximum draw.
Yeah, base load.
With solar, 7%. Anyway, then we got household hazardous waste collection, we talked about it last week, and that's from residents of Arlington, Bennington, Dorset, Lassenbury, Manchester, Pontle, Rupert, Sandgate, Searsburg, Shasberry, Stamford, Sunderland, and Woodford. Now, it's all drain cleaners and carpet cleaners and paints and gasoline and kerosene and pesticides and herbicides and all this stuff, and this will all be held at the Bennington Transfer Station, correct? And the only thing that they do not accept are televisions and computers, or alkaline and rechargeable batteries. Although, these are accepted at the transfer station during normal hours free of charge. So if you got any of these hazardous things, a good time to get them cleaned up.
That was last week.
Because there won't be another one until, there'll be one in the fall, but that'll be in Dorset. That's the next event. So if you got some hazardous stuff to get rid of, that's the time to do it. And that'll be on Saturday, May 14th, from 8 to 1.
I thought we heard that last week.
We did.
We did.
That was a reminder for us older fellows, Henry.
I think we were gonna put that on the web or something, I thought that was...
It was supposed to be.
Okay, well, I don't know if it is or not, but I thought that's what was...
Yeah, that's it. All right, and it was mentioned a while ago, they were gonna do something with this out in front of the town hall there, that gravel patch, or whatever you want to call it. And so, I got ahold of Mintron Paving, and he was up here this morning and measured it. We were thinking of two parking spots, but it ain't wide enough, so there'll be one, and he'll taper it back. And if somebody comes, and if they got a handicapped person, it's gonna be pretty level with the sidewalk, so they would get off on that side, either back in or pull up, and get off on the concrete walk and be able to come in. He said that was the best thing. They give us a price of 2,975 dollars.
I move to approve it. Let's get it done.
You got a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. So now, I guess we can talk about your whole business. We got town manager. What would you like to say on that?
Well, I know we, it was voted on our last election here to look into it, and we have someone from the League of Cities and Towns that can come down and speak to us. Thinking we should have a public meeting, maybe invite the planning commission and DRB and open it to the public. Have this guy come down, make a presentation, and learn about it.
So we get an explanation of how this thing works. I mean, the people would, so it would probably be beneficial to everybody around.
I think we discussed that one before.
Yes, yeah, there's a person that has been a manager of several towns, and now he's like a consultant and so forth, but he doesn't, he doesn't do town management. In other words, he's not looking for a job, he's gonna come down and explain how it works.
How it works. I think that would be beneficial.
Anybody can ask any question they want, and that's what we do.
For everybody, because I had a lot of people ask me at the, when they saw it on the ballot, they said, "What's this all mean?" I said, "I don't know." I really didn't have the information to tell them anything. Are we gonna have one, aren't we gonna? I says, "Well, we'd gotta know the benefits and the drawbacks."
Yep.
That would be good.
The pros and cons of it.
That's right.
All right. Well, that'd be good, we can schedule that.
Yep.
So that would be an open thing to the public, maybe at the school.
Maybe at the school.
You have that email, right, from the person? Yeah, contact him, it's the best thing I would do to see what you can do for...
See when they put it in.
And have a special meeting?
Right.
That's the only thing we'll discuss that night?
Right.
Okay.
Well, I thought it was gonna be, he was gonna explain it to the public.
That's right. But will we hold the meeting, and the person will come?
But it'll be at the school, right? Or somewhere? Okay, all right.
Yep, sounds reasonable to me.
All right. And then we had a concerned citizen wanted to talk about the town office, which I don't have too much information on that, but we did have an office committee, and we also had some selectmen go look at another place. So anybody like to elaborate on that, any?
Do you know what the status is? We had talked to the owner of the Roost, and he was gonna do some drawings, and I thought we had come to some sort of agreement where he was holding that for us for a short period of time. I know we didn't sign any contractual things, but there was some sort of agreement made there where we were gonna try and do some things. Did we move forward with any of that at the Roost, or is that all just on hold at this point?
Well, I haven't heard nothing. I'm kind of, of course, I'm a dollar and cent guy, I guess, but I'm kind of interested in getting some information out to the public on how much this is gonna cost.
Yep, I agree.
You know, because, I mean, that's the bottom line, no matter what we do, if we, you know, or the differences in cost, if we could compare it, or whatever. The pros and cons, that should be probably some kind of a, well, we should have some information and discuss it anyway, get the information out.
We talked, we talked as a board a couple months ago about presenting two options.
Yeah.
I believe the committee is still working on this site here, looking at decreasing the cost.
That was the last I heard, was they were trying to cut some corners.
And then if we could have the Roost as an option, we'd have two numbers to work with, and...
Well, I would think, even if we're looking at the Roost, we'd have to have some idea of what the renovations would be. That's why I was wondering if Mr. Chapman had moved forward with some sort of drawing, that, you know, you have a contractor give you a quote on what that means to do that. My understanding is an inspection went through that by someone, and there wasn't a whole lot of stuff that had to be done to bring it up to code.
No, it was move-in ready already, supposedly. And I talked to a fellow on the planning board, that's his brother-in-law, and he said that building was constructed, and when it was constructed, it was constructed strong enough, so the petitions don't support nothing. The whole upstairs, you could move them around anywhere you wanted, if, you know, if we needed to. But I mean, that should be known, we should know more about that, and what it might cost.
Yeah, because you're gonna tear down walls, and if you're gonna build up petitions, or even if you buy petition-type office spaces, which you can buy today, because you just leave it big open, and you put them in, and you move it wherever you want it.
That's right.
We should get some costs on that, so we know, because we know that the building was, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it was under $300,000 for the purchase of the property.
Correct.
All right.
And then it was a matter of doing what we had to do to it, and we were worried about elevators and other things, but it sounds like we don't need to do that. So it's a matter of what does it mean to petition it off and put a safe in? And I don't know where we would go to get that cost.
I think everything that we looked at up there, because I was there that day, pretty well passed with no problem, as long as you don't start taking walls down and fooling around with electricity, now you're playing another ballgame. So I mean, so if you aren't satisfied with what you see, you better have a plan. I mean, that's where you're gonna start spending some money.
Okay, what was downstairs? Is it two or three rooms downstairs, or four, right now, the way it's divided up?
The downstairs, the right-hand side, I thought, was all open.
So you got one large room?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, you can do that, but when you start, when you start putting in new electrical system, because everything there, the way it is, the fire...
Meets the codes.
Meets the codes.
Fire and electric codes.
There was no problem there.
It's move-in ready.
Now, the last, okay, and I think, I think, Ron, that the last, at least the last I recall, Mr. Chapman was going to sketch us out some drawings and so on. I don't know where that went, but I'll tell you, I think the answer to that is, is why don't we see if Linda can make contact with him, and give us a report on it next week, so that we can move on this.
Yeah, and if it needs to be reviewed by us in the town office committee, we can do a joint meeting?
Right. No, I think, or I believe, anyway, that we did have something come across the table here pertaining from the...
Committee.
The committee, that they were looking at both, both, you know, the building here, or the proposed building, and that building, and was going to give us a report. Now, that's been probably, let me guess, three weeks ago? Is it longer than that?
Three weeks.
It hasn't been long. Maybe it's a month, but, okay, I'm in the ballpark anyways, okay? Time flies, that's the problem with us. One week, and another week, and another week, and pretty quick, it's not one month, it's two, three, you know? So we have to be kinda on top of it. So anyway, but I think that, I think the answer to the question is, is to let's get ahold of Mr. Chairman, and at the same time, why don't we get ahold of the committee?
I think that's good, have a joint meeting, see what's going on.
Both, yeah, yeah, and let's move on it. And we'll find out, at least we'll find out where everybody is at.
Yeah, otherwise, you're getting a piecemeal from here, a piecemeal there. If we have a joint meeting and look at this stuff, we can be a little more informative.
I have another question.
Yes.
You know how rumors go around this town? I heard a rumor that we were under contact with him, Chapman, for the Roost building, and paying him so much a month until he sold it.
No agreement.
And then that money would go towards the purchase price, is that true?
I don't know anything about that.
We didn't sign anything.
No, no, there's no agreement. It was discussed and so on, that if we wanted to move on this, the feelings would, you know, whatever you do, it's always dollars, when you get around to do it.
Yeah, we basically, I think the way we left it was, if this gelled a little bit after inspection, because there was no agreement, you can do the inspection, if it gelled a little bit, then we'd come to some sort of mutual agreement in a contract.
That's right.
That has not been done.
And that has not been done, that's right.
Well, I'm gonna say again, I think the people in the town should know something, sort of take and have a little voice in this, about the money, you know? How much money is gonna be here, how much money is gonna be over there, because we're all in this, in this boat together. Okay, that it on that? We're gonna try to get a meeting together with Mr. Chapman and the committee, and try to get some numbers up.
Or just find out where we are.
Or find out where we are.
That's correct, that's good.
Yeah, if Mr. Chapman isn't ready to present something to us, then there's no need to do a meeting right away, but if he's worked on something, and we've got more data, then it's time to get together and let's talk about it.
Well, he's never dragged behind before, anytime we've been trying to work with him, so he can always write out, "Boom, nope."
Quick, yep.
I'm not sure where it's at.
Well, that all sounds good, so we'll have to do a little contacting there. All right, I guess now, Bruce Richardson, town forester.
So I brought this up originally a couple months ago, just like to know where we are with our, with our, with our properties and our timber management.
Right. It was kinda opportunistic that, when Linda contacted me, because I had met with Gordon Boyce, who is Bob Barlow's brother-in-law, and now owns all of Bob's former woodland area that is surrounded by the tannery woodlands. And I met with him, the county forester, Sean O'Donovan, who owns the gravel operation, and Bob Barlow was there last, the end of August last year, to discuss a timber sale on Gordon's property that would fulfill his commitment with the land use program for the state of Vermont. And I mentioned to him at that time, that would be a great opportunity to do something jointly with the town, and, you know, get something going here with that. Just the way that the properties lie there on the west mountain and the boundary lines, and, you know, it's hard to get across one property without getting onto the other.
Oh, several more.
Yeah, I do have a couple of maps here. I thought I had a really nice, pretty picture that I'd be able to place right in front of you all, but I did put these together that show the proposed tannery woodlands would be in orange, and the Boyce property is in yellow. Approximately 65 acres would be encompassed on the Boyce property, and roughly 100 to 110 on the tannery lands.
Okay, you're just doing the south tannery land, yeah?
It would be in the Halifax Hollow section of the woodland.
Yeah, because you're not doing anything on the north side?
Not at this time. Mr. Boyce has property that lies in Reservoir Hollow, and of course, the town has a considerable portion of their lands there, too. But our access there was more or less eliminated with one of the flood events that we had here.
Woods Road.
Yeah, took Woods Road out.
You're right, Woods Road went down into the Hosec, and so it's not really accessible now for log trucks, logging equipment, and so on.
Now, there's, well, the old Armstrong property might be, nobody's living there, and it's...
Floyd is back, Floyd Smith is back living here.
Oh, is he good?
And I do his woodland management with him, and I wanted to approach him and try to work something out there, so that maybe, you know, we could have good access for the town to have a good...
Yeah, because that'd be the way to go.
Because that would be the way to go for every, for the northerly half of the tannery woodlands.
That's right.
And it's also a section that's most accessible for people to, you know, for recreational uses, hiking, mountain biking, horseback riding, whatever, a little more user-friendly than Halifax Hollow. Not that any of it is flat, I did put together...
It's a little steep.
A topographic segment here that shows, this is a 1 in a thousand scale, but the normal scale is 1 in 2,000, and those lines run together pretty quickly.
Yep.
It's not for the faint part, it'd be, walking in that area, say nothing about trying to harvest.
Trees almost roll down themselves.
It is extremely steep, and of course, that will have a great deal of influence on time of year, duration of the cutting contract, and so on, because, you know, you just can't operate in the wintertime. And, you know, depending on how much volume you have to extract, you know, optimally, I would think you'd be walking a two- to summer duration for any logging contract.
That's good.
Especially with the amount of acres that'll be involved.
Okay.
So our total is how many acres of town?
Roughly 100 to 110 acres.
Okay, of the town's property. Out of 800?
Right, eight and a quarter, just under 800. Let's see, if you look at the, your colored map there, if you come up into Halifax Hollow, I'm gonna look at Nelson, I'm gonna cheat, because the Sportsman's Club camp is located right here. So that gives you a little bit better perspective of where the actual harvest would be in relation to the Sportsman's Club camp, for anybody that's been there, knows where it is, and so on and so forth. Area above the Sportsman's Club camp that is on the Boyce property sustained a fairly heavy wind throw associated with the tornado that bounced through town here about 2003 or '04, I think.
It's been 10, 15 years, yeah.
Because we salvaged wood off in that piece, and we actually salvaged a little bit off the town land at that time. It generated a little bit of income, but that was the last thing that's been done on town property.
So what's mostly up here? Is it hardwood? What's...
Yeah, this is all northern hardwood, on northern slopes, more maple, birch, but a good mixture of oak through, a good portion of it. Parts of it have been, lower part, there was, I think, early to mid-'80s crudeiac lumber, had a contract with the tannery at that time, and they hit one area there quite hard.
Yeah, and the Reservoir Hollow.
And Reservoir Hollow, but the only thing they really did in Halifax Hollow was that one section bordering the original town lot that came from Northeast Wood Products.
Yep, yep, that's there, too. And is that piece, there's nothing on that piece of this?
Well, that's getting ready.
It's not ready yet, though.
Yeah, I guess it pushed game to shove.
Well, the reason why I asked that is because I remember when we cut it, we said only to cut half of it and leave the other half back in.
Oh, yeah, it is, it's still in very good shape.
Okay.
Just a good bit there.
Okay.
The, in the area that we'd be doing now, a lot of it was high graded, of course, in the past, and there's, you know, a fair amount of low-quality wood that'd be coming out, but there is some very nice quality wood that has grown since the last, you know, major harvest over most of that area was...
Over 30 years.
Well, before that, it was probably about the mid-'70s, so it's been close to 40 years.
Well, that last cut, you could see the ledges.
In Reservoir Hollow, yes.
Yeah, you know what I'm trying, you're...
Most of that was actually in the state of New York, that wasn't.
Is that right?
That wasn't.
Okay, okay.
State of New York comes over quite a ways.
Oh, yeah, it comes over further than most places.
Yep.
In Reservoir Hollow, probably about halfway down.
Yep, yep.
Yeah, I've been up to that mark up there.
As far as what I've got anticipated to start work on the Boyce project here, probably within the next two weeks. I know I won't get at it within the week, but I had told him probably in April, it's, April's getting pretty well shot right now, but, yeah, we're getting very close to starting that.
So I guess, what are we talking about in the way of a timber cut in the sense of dollars, I guess, if we go ahead?
Well, I don't like to put dollars and cents on stuff until I have my tally in front of me, you know? But, you know, at that, even a moderate cut, you know, on 100 acres, at a couple thousand feet to the acre, you know, even a little bit less, 150, 200,000 board feet.
I just know that taxpayers will love us if we can find something.
Just a wild guess, a swag, right? A swag and a wag?
Yeah.
My wag would be somewhere in around 60, 75,000 dollars.
Nelson, I think there's two things you wanna kinda have in your mind. It's how many feet you're gonna harvest, and the price that hardwood is bringing at this time, and what participated future it's gonna bring us, and where it used to be. Now, it has kinda gone to a...
We surely aren't where we were, you know?
Well, that's my point, so I think that if you wanna talk about something, you know, I think you wanna kinda have in mind, you know, it's like the price of milk. you know, I think you wanna kinda have in mind, you know, it's like the price of milk. Today, it's worth nothing. Okay. And that's a fact. I mean, that isn't, I mean, that's a fact. So, I mean, just where do we stand? I mean, it's something that, I mean, if you wanna talk about harvest, I mean, you should talk about that, whether you're gonna try to grab a couple nickels today, or do you wanna... Or when should you be harvesting it? All I'm saying is, don't get excited over a few nickels if we should wait. I mean, I'm asking that question of you. You follow me?
As of right now, though, you're technically, you know, already 10 years behind in your management plan. Because we haven't done anything to this point. So, since the management plan was put together 2005, roughly, right?
We purchased 2002, so...
Was it? Okay, so it was 2003, 2004.
Well, before, when Bruce was here a few years ago, the timing just wasn't right. The price was low.
The lumber markets were quite depressed at that time, and it was like, you know, you waited this long, you might as well.
Well, if somebody's telling me they're taking 100 acres and harvesting it out of the 700, and I don't know what's on this other side, if there's hardwood over there, too, in the future that we might be after.
Right.
You know, we're taking a very small portion of what we have here. And I think to meet our requirements of harvesting and so forth, I think it's the right thing to do. I think we should move forward, and we do have a timber pump that we put this money in, and there is pieces that go towards taxes. And I think we're doing the wrong thing if we continually set on this. We're setting on it for 16 years.
Well, I'm just saying, I think it's something that, I didn't say not to do it. Get those words right. I did not say not to do it. I said, "You oughta know what you're gonna do before you do it." That's all. So...
That's why we have Bruce here.
You know, my plan with Boyce, and, you know, what we talked about there, and of course, with the town being a municipality, you know, everything would be put up to a competitive bid process, rather than a negotiation with whoever.
I understand.
I would go in, mark every tree, put the tally together, perspectives sent out to, you know...
Yeah, same as you always, I understand. I understand that. Okay.
You know, then we'd go from there, you know, along some bid.
Okay.
I'm making a motion.
I'd second it. I'd second it. I think it's...
Let's move forward.
However, you know...
Well, we're supposed to be managing it anyway, so...
Well, right.
At least we'll know what's there if he goes up and marks it.
Well, no, I want it marked.
Well, you better remember, too, you know, we're looking down the road to the future.
That's right. Oh, yeah.
We're not in looking to liquidate the place.
That's right.
You know, the management plan that was drawn up, it gives all, you know, stand by stand, every one of these numbers you see on your map there, in that management plan describes it with a small narrative, the type of treatment that we'll be looking for, roughly the, you know, length between your cutting intervals, and so on and so forth, so... You know, it's not like we're...
And you would oversee the projects.
What I do is I see we're through from beginning to the end.
I made the motion. He's second to have him go ahead and mark it up, get it out the bid.
And, you know, you always reserve the right...
Oh, I understand. No, no, I'm agreeing with you. I just wanna...
If it doesn't come into...
That's right. That's the time that...
Oh, I'm not...
If it's reasonable at the time, then...
Alright, we got a motion. We got a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Very good.
Move forward.
Now...
Thank Bruce.
Bruce, while you're here, though, just as long as we're yacking. This Reservoir Hollow.
Yes.
See, they used to go up and come across, there's a 40-acre field, I guess, right there, before, your water line used to go through there, from the tannery stuff. You come up Snake Hill, they call it.
That's the one I'm...
That's the one we're talking about.
That takes you up in... So you've talked to this other fellow about that, if we proceed further on.
Floyd Smith is the old Armstrong property.
Right, right. And, well, the only reason I brought that up is, you know, if we do, I know we're not doing that now, we just talked about the other properties. But if we do do something here, that property, we also have a chance of maybe getting some fill out of there. Gravel, sand, whatever's there. And if we were going up there to log, I would strongly suggest to this board that we get an excavator up there, and do a few holes, and see if there's any material for the town.
You have to remember, though, he does have an enrollment of that property in current use, so that anything that's...
We're not talking about this. We're talking about our property.
Oh, your property?
Not his property.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But we'll be going across there.
Right.
Yeah, we're crossing, well, go Armstrong or Boyce.
Yeah, in our agreement, we have the right to use 25 acres as a gravel park.
If there's something there that we can...
If there's something there.
Right.
Oh, alright.
That's...
He just wants to know if there's anything there.
Yeah. And just so that you...
And not halfway up the mountain.
Yeah, right.
Just so that you get kinda filled in, this has been under discussion for many, many times, over the years.
Since we bought the property.
Over the years, okay? So that, we're just trying to follow up on...
I mean, if we were up there, if we did go into that hollow, you know, well, I just wanted to bring it up so that everybody'd have a chance to think about it again. We've thought about it before, but...
I would really like to see the town develop a concrete, full proof access into that property.
It'd be wonderful if we do.
We need to talk to that guy right there.
Yeah, that's right.
Well, I talked to his wife when she was there, but they were...
There is a couple of different avenues.
They were splitting, so it made it hard.
I just wanted to just make a note of that, that's all.
But I'll talk to him again. I heard he was up there.
Okay, that's good.
Alright, thank you.
Thanks, man. I appreciate it.
If there's no other business before the board, I make a motion for adjournment.
I got another guy here. He might wanna say something. You just here to watch?
Yeah.
You didn't wanna say anything?
Second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.